Bye, Jen.
Happy birthday.
I know how much you love to be.
Extra attention, yes, lovely.
That's hard. It's so hard.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before I call the Lexington City Council meeting to order, I wanted to share with you a few comments for those of you who would like to speak tonight and ask you to sign up on our signup sheet over here. Public comments are always welcome, and I invite you to sign up if you wish to speak tonight. I will recognize those signed up during the citizens remarks section of the council's agenda. Citizens who wish to speak to council but neglect to sign up in advance may be permitted to address the council during citizens remarks and comments agenda item, but only at the discretion of the mayor. When speaking to the city council, ask that these guidelines be followed. One, be recognized or once recognized to speak, please come forward, stand at the podium, and for the record, state your name, and if you are a resident of Lexington, Virginia. If you want to be contacted after this meeting, please contact, please provide your contact information to our clerk, Kate Beard. Please make your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage the audience. Please be brief, state your position, and provide facts. We ask that you please provide written statements and/or supporting materials to the clerk for distribution to the council and the city manager. Debate is prohibited. This is a time for us to hear from you to share your thoughts and ideas with your city council. We ask that you speak clearly as we want to hear what you have to say. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and individuals may not yield their allotted time to another person. If you represent a group, five minutes are allotted to you allotted, and you are invited to identify other members of your group who are in attendance. The council or mayor may allow exceptions to these guidelines at their discretion. I remind us all that meetings of the Lexington City Council are formal proceedings and are recorded. And with that, I would like to call the meeting to order. And our first item of business is I would ask for council's consideration of utilizing electronic virtual meeting for Councilman Driscoll.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Attorney.
The only thing I would add, Mr. Mayor, is Mr. Driscoll needs to indicate the reason for his attending remotely and the location from which he is attending remotely. And the reason can be as general as a personal reason, a medical reason, a caring for somebody reason, but that has to be in the record.
And that will be our test. Mr. Driscoll, did you hear that?
I heard it loud and clear, and I'm very happy that I can attend this way. The reason I am attending electronically is I am in a family care situation with my brother in Newfield, New York.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'd ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Betts, Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Ms. Strawn, Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Alexander. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, John. Glad you're with us and look forward to the work of council. I would ask that you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Next item is consideration of the agenda. Not aware of any changes or corrections unless there's an objection from council, we will adopt it as presented. It is adopted. Next item is proclamations, and it brings me great joy to offer, I think, for the 11th year straight, establishing November 1st as the extra mile day in Lexington, Virginia. Whereas Lexington, Virginia is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Lexington, Virginia is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Lexington, Virginia is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Lexington, Virginia acknowledges the mission of extra mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support extra mile day on November 1st, 2025. Now, therefore, as mayor of Lexington, I do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2025 to be extra mile day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and world a better place. Adopted the 16th day of October, 2025, and I appreciate Kate Beard going the extra mile and providing this force this evening and encourage you not to celebrate it just on November 1st, but every day. Next item on our agenda are presentations, and I'd like to call up Lexington Police Chief AJ to administer the oath of honor. Welcome.
Speaking of going the extra mile, when officers are hired and graduate the academy, they're sworn in and given the authority of the badge. And when they do that, it is something that they're given based on graduating the academy and the charge that comes with the badge. But I, we think that we want to go the extra mile and have them do something that holds them accountable to the community and to the citizens and to the council. So therefore, we're going to give the oath of honor to two of our officers who were recently promoted, and the hope is that this catches on and as new hires come in and as new promotions are made, this is something that would continue because having that authority is 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 a heavy burden, but the heavier burden is being accountable to the community. So you're going to hear in this on in this oath of honor, some words like accountable where we're talking about, we want them to be accountable for their actions to the community. We have words like honor where we are giving a bond or a guarantee that we're going to do something. Integrity, a firm adherence to the principles in their private and their public life. Courage, having the heart to go into the fight, to go stand between good and evil, so to speak. Accountability, being answerable so that they're answerable to you, to the citizens, and to the community. And then last, you'll hear community. It's our municipality. But it's bigger than that. It's the people of Lexington. It's what makes Lexington special. So those are the words you're going to hear in this, and I'm going to ask both Captain Condry and Lieutenant Burks to come up. They were in an acting role when we arrived, and they're doing a fabulous job. And thankfully, Tom thinks very much like I do. If they're doing the work, they should be rewarded with the position. So I'm very grateful that you allowed this to happen and that, and I'm super proud that I get to be the one that actually did the promotions because I've known Ron for a very, very long time. I've known Jess for a good amount of time because I've known her before I came here because my son worked here, and he spoke very highly of her way back then when he worked there. So I'm going to get you guys to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'll go slow so we don't get lost. On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my integrity, my character, for the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution, the community, and the agency I serve. So help me God. So congratulations. These are your new captain and lieutenant, so. We can get a few signatures. Jess. So Ron, if you'll sign right here that you took this oath, and then you've got something you can frame. Even if you're using the wrong hand. All right. And Jess, if you will sign right there. These are yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for allowing this to happen. It means a lot to, I think, PD to really be accepted into a council meeting to say, we want to do better. We want to do good by our community. So thank you. You need me to stay? I will. If not, I've got an hour drive home.
Chief, thank you for being with us this evening, and thank you for leading our department during this transition time and got some good folks to work with to make you look good and excited about the oath they've taken and the leadership that they provide. So and yes, please feel free to head on home.
I'd be there, and I will echo what you said. You have a great group of guys, girls in that department that we really want to do well. So you're blessed.
Thank you, sir. And we greatly appreciate members of the family being here and participating in this. So thank, thank you, Burks, for being here. Next item on our agenda is the fiscal year 25 fourth quarter financial report, and I'll call on Jennifer Bell to walk us through this report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So overall, FY 25 finished strong. Our increased revenue was due to a lot of large one-time revenue sources that we received, the largest of which being the 2025 series bond issue. And other revenues related to that, which include the nearly $200,000 that Lexington had paid in FY 24 to get the DSS project started. And once we received the bond proceeds, we were able to reimburse ourselves for that money. So when you first look at our revenue report, we have revenues of 32.5 million in FY 25. But once you back out those one-time revenue sources that we received, it brings us to 25.3 million, which is still a credible number. Expenditures, we we knew we were going to go over in health, education, and welfare largely, well, solely in that department due to the CSA increased usage of the service and cost to the city. However, we do have cost savings in other areas of the general fund that will be able to offset the overage there. And then just to walk through where we have our surplus. Again, like I said, the revenue is at 32.5 million with our expenditures at 23. Almost 9 million. Then when we back out the bond proceeds, the reimbursement and interest on bond proceeds, we are left with a surplus of 1.1.4 million. And at our next meeting, I will bring forward to you carryover requests that will further reduce that number. And those carryovers are for projects that we either started or had planned to start in FY 25, did not complete, and we want to carry forward to FY 26. So at the end of the day, we're looking at a $766,500 surplus, which, as we discussed a few meetings back, will cover the additional costs associated with the city hall renovation. Any questions on general fund? The the school fund, as we heard just earlier this evening, had a surplus of around $240,000, which, again, at the next meeting, I will be requesting that they be allowed to to keep that money as they mentioned earlier and set it aside in their reserve funds. And then the utility fund, you'll see expenditures for the year were only 57% of budget, and that's due to the Jackson Avenue area Phase 1A project. We thought we were going to get that underway in FY 25, and we did not. So we do, we have the financing in place for it now, and I believe it's going to be going out to bid early in 26. Okay. We we did see some cost overruns in the administration section and in water operations. However, both can be covered by savings that we saw in the wastewater operations. The overage you're seeing in debt service is related to the costs of issuance for that bond that we sold in May, in March, rather. In the equipment replacement fund, we were able to purchase and receive everything on our list with the exception of the Public Works bucket truck, which actually arrived in July, just a few days into July. And then the fire department ambulance, which we expect in October, but that will probably get pushed as well. Both of those were ordered a few years ago, so we'll be very happy once that ambulance arrives. As I know, Public Works was appreciative of the bucket truck as well. So I'm not requesting any action at this time. This is for informational purposes. And of course, these are the unaudited numbers. We are still working with Robinson Farmer Cox on the FY 25 audit, and that will be presented to you hopefully the first meeting in December.
Very good. Members of council have questions on the report?
With the some of the sales lodging meal stacks, how are the trends currently?
Not quite as bad as I thought they would be, if that is helpful at all. So I did recently circulate the tax graph collections for the first quarter and I'm sorry, offhand, I can't recall where where we stood. I think we are still behind in sales tax, but yeah, I will.
Other questions? Mr. Driscoll, any questions from you?
Well, thank you. Very clear. Good presentation. Appreciate it.
Great work, Jen. Thank you for keeping the beans counted. And yes, it's a still remains an interesting world in which we live for delivery of trucks and equipment and what have you, but very excited to see in general the actual cost being less on many of these. Not the ambulance, but the others. So thank you. Next item on the agenda, public hearings, and we'd like to call in city manager for ordinance amending procedures for discontinuing services for non-payment of utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, this is really to bring our procedures and code into compliance with changes to state statute. So we will be passing this ordinance and be in full compliance. There are some actions that we'll take as a result of this. A couple of examples where this legislation will improve equity for our residents. For example, we are not going to turn off any utility services on any day where the temperature is expected to be above 93 degrees Fahrenheit. So we'll discontinue our turnoff procedure at that point until those temperatures return. Also, the ordinance requires that we publish information in both English and Spanish, so we'll be working on that to make sure that all of our residents who speak English or Spanish understand our disconnect procedures. Generally speaking, this is a more of a housekeeping item. Happy to answer any specific questions you have, but generally speaking, this just brings our procedures in compliance with state statute.
Thank you, sir. Any members of council have any questions for the city manager? Yes, ma'am.
Question in regard to the temperature. If the temperatures are going to be consistently within 93, 92, 94 for days on end, does that mean that as soon as it goes below 93, it will get cut off, and then the next day it's back up to 93? Or will you wait until that trend is over?
Yeah, my read of the ordinance is that we would, we would wait till that trend is over.
Okay. You probably could turn it off, but operational perspective, it wouldn't make any.
Right.
You knew it was going to go right back down.
Thank you.
To be clear, we never want to turn off anyone's service. It's it's bad for the customer. It's bad for the pipes. It's just, there's, there's just no good aspect of it. And so I think the purpose of this is just to protect consumers, families who might need water from a hydration standpoint, sanitation standpoint. So we're going to err on the side of the benefit of the consumer.
And to cover multi-day situations, you can't, you can't turn disconnect on a Friday, for example, so you don't end up with a hot Sunday or something that comes along.
Okay. Thank you. That that helps.
And the city manager said it best. We really don't want to ever, but non-payment, sometimes it necessitates, and this is the enabling policy to do that. So.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just briefly, the other thing it does in the first section is it actually enhances the ability for a property owner to have their tenant be responsible for them for the utility. So there's increased flexibility.
Gotcha. Thank you. With that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this item? And this is the public hearing on ordinance 2025-06, amending procedures for discontinuing services for non-payment of utilities. Ms. Johnson, would you like to speak? Come on down. I'll remind you, please state your name for the record.
Dawn Mays Johnson. I'm a resident of the city. I misunderstood. I thought this was a form to pass the ordinance. Donna, I'm saying it's already passed because it's date.
No, ma'am. We have one existing, and we're updating it to comply. Yes, ma'am.
I'll proceed then. Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, council members. For the past two years, I have raised ongoing concerns regarding the unexplained increase in my utility bill at 411 North Randolph Street. Historically, my monthly charges range between $50 and $60. However, they have surged to as high as $195 a month. That's an increase of 50% of a water bill for one individual person. In November 19, 2024, I contacted the Public Works Department to report the sudden spike. I followed every recommendation provided to identify potential causes within my home. One issue, a contingency running toilet was resolved with a full replacement. No other internal problems were found by a plumber. Yet, after a brief return to normal building, the charges escalated again. A second plumbing company inspector, inspector, inspection confirmed no additional issues on my property at all. Nothing for the water heaters. No other pipes were leaking. Public Works later informed me that the increased useless was occurring between midnight and 6:00 AM, a time when no one is awake or using water in my house. Makes me question why at this time of day. City management did offer a temporary, did offer two temporary bill reductions. However, the following month, my bill again exceeded $100. I requested that Public Works use the x-ray equipment as suggested to me by their supervisor to detect any underground pipe damage not visible to the eye. A crack or break beneath the surface will allow water to seep into the ground without triggering a meter flood. To date, I'm still waiting on this inspection, this x-ray machine. I had to enter multiple payment arrangements just to keep up with my utility costs, which had often exceeded the total of my cable, gas, or electric bill monthly. Last year, I raised another issue with Public Works regarding a sewer line on the north side of my property, which they believed to be inactive. We did too. Staff were unaware of this existence, but confirmed it was it was active and servicing two neighboring properties at 413 and 415. The sewage and water lines ran drained directly into my separate line at 411. Without knowledge of this sewer line, how can you very well come to a conclusion that there's something wrong with my sewer reading? On April 17, 2025, the sewer line erupted on my property. Public Works had to access my line to clear the debris, to clear the debris. After 53 minutes, they successfully cleared the lines for 413 and 415 system. They found baby diapers, feminine hygiene products, doll baby heads, bundles of hair, and hair products and other debris. Me, there is no one living at 411 who uses or has used any of these items found in my, found in sewer line. I need someone to make sense of this to me, please. Given these circumstances, I cannot support the city's practice of placing wings on properties for unpaid utility bills when there is no clear understanding of where service lines run or whether infrastructure is functioning properly. The city continues to install new equipment on aging systems, some over a century old, I probably so, without verifying their integrity. I'm also deeply concerned by the imbalance of power between the, between the residents and city departments. The city acts as judge, jury, and executioner, better known as the kangaroo court, declaring the bill accurate, denying error, enforcing payment, shutting off water. Now you want to apply a lien, all without recourse for the resident. I respectfully ask the council to please ask yourself and maybe answer the public. Where are, what, what are the legal costs to residents when these lien-related transactions occur? How quickly can a lien be placed on a property, property, and how long does it take to remove it? What possible does the city assume for these sewer lines that are dilapidated and causing personal property damage as well as higher utility bills maybe to the homeowner? Thank you for your time and attention to this concern.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Appreciate you being here and I know the city manager is taking notes during your presentation on the issues that you raised and we'll look into those and seek to find a solution. I know that personal property, we're, we're all responsible for our property that we own, but collectively work within the system with the water and the sewer. So sorry for the difficulties you've incurred and look forward to addressing those. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this ordinance? Not seeing anyone wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing at 7:34 and ask for council's consideration.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-06 and ordinance to update our utility cutoff procedures to come into accordance with the Code of Virginia.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think it's important to make sure our code aligns with the state code and that's a Dylan's rule state.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. Any other discussion? If not, ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Ms. Strong? Mr. Betts? Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And thank you for the public input. Next item is public hearing on ordinance 2025-07. It incorporates the budget amendments requested for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 25. Come on down, Ms. Bell. Welcome back.
Thank you. I apologize. You're gonna see a lot of me tonight. So this request, the ordinance, we are looking to just kind of clean up the end of year books and records. And so largely in the areas where we had overages, there are other areas where we did not spend everything. So tonight I am asking for us to be able to reappropriate those funds from one area to another. There are a few areas where I am requesting additional funds be appropriated. And those are within the general fund. I'm looking to request $1.2 million from the bond proceeds be appropriated to cover bond-related expenses. Within the school fund, they received a donation of $4,700 that was unbudgeted and they did spend in FY25. So I'm requesting an appropriation for that. And then in the utility fund, I'm requesting an appropriation for $172,285 to cover costs associated with the emergency intervention at Moores Creek Dam. And in capital projects, I'm requesting 309, 899,000 from fund balance to cover expenses related to City Hall's swing space and $86,890 for expenses related to the White Street Stormwater BMP.
Any questions for Ms. Bell? I have one. The contribution to the school, do you know what that was?
I don't.
Utilized for?
Who that was from?
But not, I'm not concerned about that, but just what?
What we used it for.
What was being funded? Sure. And you can certainly follow up with if it's, if it's not handy.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna waste time, but I thought it had its own expense line.
You, you can let us know later.
Do that. Yeah, sorry.
I know they recently received a donation to help toward the Chesapeake Bay trip, but that was possibly in FY26. And I know we're talking about FY25 right now, but they have that, that is another donation we may need to appropriate at some point, but
Right.
A, one of the local companies contributed.
Good. It's always terrific when members of the community are generous with our schools. Just want to make sure that, that what's getting funded and that state's falling through on theirs and we're following through on ours as well. So, but thank you very much.
For the, for the Moores Creek Dam.
Nick, if you could just play your microphone a little closer.
For the Moores Creek Dam funds, is that, that's just our portion? And I think the state contributes something towards that study or?
Well, I think this wasn't for the study as much as this was for actual repairs. Do you recall, Tom?
This was for the, I'm sorry, this was for the geotech study.
Okay.
And, and the project was funded. We did receive a grant from the state for about just under 50% of the costs. But as you may remember, in February, we went ahead and authorized this, but we had never appropriated the funds from the utility fund. So this, this action takes care of.
So this is just, this is our portion that we needed to?
This is the entirety of the engineering study. 50% of the, we'll have offsetting revenue coming in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for ordinance 2025-07, incorporating the budget amendments requested for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2025. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this topic? Hearing none at 7:40. I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for council's consideration.
Move to approve ordinance 2025-07, incorporating budget amendments relating to the fourth quarter of FY25.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Betts?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Strong? Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And for the final public hearing, ordinance 2025-08, ordinance that incorporates appropriation of an additional 300,000 in fiscal year 2026. And have the birthday girl come back up.
Thank you. Thank you for that. This ordinance is requesting appropriation of the $300,000. We learned of at the last meeting that Columbia Gas is going to contribute to the city to pave the roads that they have been disturbing as they do their work. Normally they would pave on their own, but it will be better if we can just do it as part of Lexington's paving schedule. So with the 300,000, we would actually like to appropriate $150,000 of that toward paving projects and then $150,000 of that toward the Main Street Lexington line of credit. So looking at our paving budget for the year was originally $1,147,000. Once we received the bid from PaveCon, it came in just over a million dollars. And then we additionally removed one street from that project. So at the end of the day, we would be looking at a surplus in paving of $157,580 in FY26. We would like to add the Bubble Pool and Kids Place for a total of 115,687. So that will leave us with a, an unspent appropriation of $41,892. Once we add in the Columbia Gas, that of course brings us to 341. And then subtracting out the paving projects we would like to add, which are still to be determined, but Patrick Madigan, our Public Works Director, is going to advise on the the areas that need the most work the soonest. And once, once we back that out, and then if we increase the Main Street Lexington line of credit, we'll still have over $41,000 that we can return to fund balance. And on the Main Street Lexington project, we, we are requesting to increase their line of credit. They have received additional donations that will cover this, will be paid back. It's just they're looking to do the work immediately and their donations are set up to come in over the next several years. And just a reminder, this is city-owned property, so it's not unheard of for us to invest in it.
And just, I'll clarify that again. Us extending the line of credit is not us spending those dollars. We will get them paid back based on donations. I know you just said that. I'm gonna repeat it because there's something called misinformation and people love to run with it, but in this instance, we will get that paid back. So thank you for pointing that out.
Jen, are they going to be sending that money back to us in increments or waiting until they have it all?
It will be in increments to, to my understanding, yes.
Are we charging them any interest or?
We are not.
Just, just one other thing in the spirit of addressing perhaps in advance misinformation. Just to be clear, the entirety of the 300,000 that we're receiving from Columbia Gas will be invested right back into the roads. But because our, our, we're, we're gonna pave 100% of the roads in Providence Hill that they, that they have replaced gas mains on in this, in this calendar year. And so that's just, that's just what we're doing with those funds. Having said that, as Ms. Bell explained, we have some residual funds left over in our paving budget and effectively some of those are going to be redirected to the Main Street line of credit if that's, if council passes this ordinance. I just wouldn't want anyone to misunderstand that, that any Columbia Gas money is going to the Courthouse Square project either.
This is related to that, but not necessarily the appropriation. But I know Public Works is working with Columbia Gas in regard to the paving. But have they had a conversation about the sidewalk damage that they're now doing?
I'm not aware of those conversations, but be happy to look into it and make sure that they're aware of it. Anytime they would cut across the sidewalk, the expectation is they restore that.
They, they intend to do that?
That, that would be our expectation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. And that is certainly the expectation in the spirit of the agreement with our friends at Columbia Gas and other infrastructure operators in our community. Okay. Excuse me just a second. This time I'd like to open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-08. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this topic? Hearing the dull roar of the air handler. Close the public hearing at 7:46 and ask for council's consideration.
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2025-08, an ordinance that incorporates the appropriating of $300,000 in FY26.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none and roll call vote. Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Strong? Mr. Betts? Ms. Alexander? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And thank you, Jen, for the multiple presentations. And thank you to all of staff for bringing these forward and getting these projects completed. Next item on the agenda is citizens' remarks and comments. I'll remind folks of the, the guidelines that I discussed before. And I have two folks that wanted to speak this evening, Dawn Mays Johnson, and she spoke earlier on the utility concern. And next, Edward Quabane, if you'd like to come forward. Welcome.
So I was, I was at the last meeting to suggest that the council might pass a resolution about the Gaza situation. I would like to amend that and instead of a resolution, it might be better to to have a letter that I and some other people could take to our members of Congress to talk about some problems with the American Gaza policy. I think a letter has the advantage of allowing a more in-depth discussion of the issues. And I started writing a draft that the council might want to consider. It's not finished, but I gave paid here some copies of it if you're not even looking at it. And I'm hoping to discuss it at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being with us and raising this issue again. And we'll discuss with council the prospects of bringing forward potential action in November. The attorney, or anyone else that would like to speak to council this evening during our public comments section? Hearing none. I'll close the public citizens' remarks and comments at 7:48. And I will backtrack. The astute attorney reminded me that minutes were on the agenda and I jumped right over that. So I would offer if there were any objection to council's approval of the minutes as presented. Hearing none. They are approved and thank you, Mr. Carroll. Next item on the agenda, reports and communications. Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith?
No report, but I did send a video and some pictures to all of our new tire shredder. Hope you had a chance to look at them. If you had any questions about that.
All right. Potential revenue source may be selling tickets to watch the tire eater in action.
Or, or operating the machine. We've got a bidding war.
Thank you, sir. Main Street Lexington, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Main Street Lexington, 85 registrants for the inaugural Love Lex VA Bar Crawl on Saturday. A short survey, survey has been sent to the participating restaurants and other establishments to gather feedback. I've talked to one board member earlier this week and it was a nice, successful event. Downtown Scarecrow contest runs through 10/26. Public voting will take place next week, starting Monday, the 20th, on the Main Street Lexington website. Downtown trick-or-treating coming up at the usual time, 3:30 to 5:00 on the afternoon of Halloween next Friday. Shop Small Sweet Steaks, formerly known as Love Lex Lotto, is slated to start on Saturday, the 1st of, of November. Main Street is confirming business participation and will print and distribute the cards in time to get underway at the beginning of November. Main Street staff met with Chamber Tourism and Main Street BV on Wednesday to talk about collaborating on marketing and promotional initiatives during the holiday season. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Smith? Planning Commission, Ms. Strong?
No report.
Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Betts?
Round 10 of the Rockbridge Area Tourism Event Sponsorship Program opens on Friday, October 17, 2025. The application process will start October 17, 2025, and the application process will close November 16, 2025 for this round of sponsorships. Award announcements will be made on Friday, December 19, 2025. The funding will be distributed for events receiving an award in this round by the week of December 29, 2025. Advocates must be organizing event located within Lexington, Buna Vista, Rockbridge County, Virginia, and the event must occur between January 1 and June 30, 2026. Awards will be based on the strength of the application, including special attention to events that have the potential to attract out-of-town visitors. A total of 10,000 may be awarded in this round overall. However, a total disbursement of this amount is not guaranteed. Requests should not be, should not exceed $3,000 per event. And then sponsorship applications and related guidelines can be found at LexingtonVirginia.com/sponsorships.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Members Council have any questions? Lots of fun things going on in this beautiful fall. Rockbridge Area Recreation Organization.
Two quick points. At our last meeting, I was appointed vice mayor, I mean, a vice chair for the 10th year in a row, the 10th year in a row for me. So Joey Jones will be our chair for the eighth year in a row. And then as far as, there's been a lot of discussion in the community about a new recreation center. Raro is enjoying learning the details as the rest of the community is. We are excited about the opportunity to potentially utilize that space to serve the recreational needs of the community. We're also looking forward to learning what the costs may be to the localities. But that being said, Raro has been appreciated, appreciative toward the city for the many years of free rent. for the many years of free rent that you all have been providing the RARO organization here in the city of Lexington. So I just wanted to say we look forward to learning more details. We'll share with this council any details that we learn about the proposal. But I didn't want the city to not think that we were appreciative of the, of your being a landlord for us for free for, for many, many years. So thank you.
Now, the city of Lexington and RARO's history goes way back. I have a shirt to prove it. I may wear it at the next council meeting just for fun. But excited about the future of RARO and the current leadership and the great initiatives they have and contributions that our neighbors in the county will be making, are proposing to make. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Ziegler? Threshold.
No report.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. For my report, as you all on council are aware, last weekend was VML Conference Weekend in Roanoke, Virginia. You missed a good time. There were lots of neat things to learn. Just a couple of the highlights, there was a representative from, the vice mayor from Harrisonburg, Virginia, convened breakfast two mornings to talk about town and gown opportunities and potential legislation to conspire getting support from the state and then collaborating. They obviously have James Madison University in Harrisonburg, and they were taking more of a state school approach, but they invited folks from Ashland and all across the state for public and private schools, and it was a healthy and robust conversation. At the Mayor's Institute on Saturday, the speaker, Mr. Campbell spoke about a culture of excellence in organizational materials and information I'll pass along to the city manager, but great for team building. And the idea, a lot of the sound leadership principles that he brought from the work that he's done over the years in a few different roles, but very inspiring and thoughtful speaker. It's always interesting when you have speakers that come and address a, a group of mayors and one thanks them for their service, but then when questions came up, they didn't know the answer. He acknowledged he didn't know the answer. Sometimes in those settings, you get an answer and it's not always fully thought out. If you have an interest in learning more about social media or have an interest in being entertained by social media, I would direct you to the town of Rocky Mount. Holland Purdue, the mayor is an attorney by profession, but is passionate about utilizing social media to advance Rocky Mount and their efforts to be a more significant town and have the resources to be successful. See me on a sidebar, fascinating guy and interesting story of the, you can go onto their website and see the archived information. He posts meaningful posts on Facebook twice a day. So he is not shy. Two other items of note for the VML Conference. Number one, the, the word of the conference was uncertainty in our community, in our world, in our economics. Many of the speakers referenced in today's uncertainty. And it was recognized that in uncertainty, there's also opportunity. So encouraging people to, to seek the silver lining. But data centers were a huge topic in the uncertainty. And one of the speakers, one takeaway I had was even if you don't have enough land to have a data center in your community, you should probably have a data, data center policy anyway. So something for council to think about, but lots of, lots of discussion about data centers, their impact on a community and their impact on our entire Commonwealth as they seek out power to operate. And lastly, a fascinating circumstance that I learned from the mayor of Waynesboro. They have initiated a vitality tax. And the vitality tax was a much better name than the first one they came up with, which was, can't recall, but it was worth forgetting. Vitality Tax in Waynesboro, they are dedicating one cent of their tax on real estate to go to a fund exclusively for subsidized housing. And it can be applied to receive a grant, to purchase property, but anything to advance subsidized housing. Don't know all the details on it, but that's the, the thumbnail of it and their commitment to work on and make a, put their money to work, put their money where their mouth is from that standpoint.
And what's one penny for Waynesboro?
For Waynesboro, which she said was population 23,000, one penny is $300,000. Also from my report, I would identify, I'm your rep on Raina. And the Rockbridge Area Network Authority met earlier this week and continues to be a great partner with the localities, representing them and providing the data center, much, much smaller variety than was talked about at VML. And the main business that we have, we're investing currently in a new website, a new host, because the last one closed up shop. And with the ambition of getting more people to co-locate their servers and utilize the data center from other areas of the country as well as other communities. And grateful to the city manager Leslie, who also attended the VML Conference and, and supporting the, the good work that they do. And that is my report. Welcome. Any questions now or later?
I'll just add on, I, from one of the sessions I went to was on parking, so I just handed out this idea sheet and it was talking about having no parking regulations and a couple of cities in the state have gone to that. You know, we, we don't have parking regulations or requirements, I should say, parking requirements.
Let the record show, we do have.
Yeah, for downtown and yeah, right, not having parking, off-site parking requirements doesn't mean you don't regulate your on-street parking. But so food for thought and why, why localities are going to it are explained on the sheet.
Yeah, fascinating idea that you would have a business requirement to have more space for parking than the business occupies to operate. So lots of interesting things at VML. Thank you, Ms. Strong. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. First of all, thank you for increasing the appropriations for the paving program. And the city's paving program will begin next week. The first work will begin in the Providence Hill neighborhood, repaving the areas where we have already discussed Columbia Gas has been doing their main replacement projects. The paving will continue through the week of Thanksgiving. All of this, of course, is weather dependent. We'll be posting to the best of our ability, the streets and parking lots that are scheduled for resurfacing in the week or two ahead. I would just give a fair warning. In my experience, contractors reserve the right to change their schedule based on weather and their own whimsy. So we will ask for residents' flexibility and good cheer in advance as we'll try and publish it, but it may not be exactly the paving on the same day that we anticipated. Like any project, whether it's painting a room in your house or repaving a street, it's unpleasant while you do it and then you get to enjoy the benefit for a long time after. Second point, the Rocks to Roofs Housing Summit is scheduled for next Tuesday, October 21st. It's free and open to the public. It's at the Virginia Horse Center. Interested persons can still register by going to the Lexington Rockbridge Area Chamber of Commerce website. Some of the speakers will include our very own vice mayor, Marilyn Alexander. And the last I heard, we had over 100 registrants for the conference, so please join your many friends and neighbors. It's an educational summit, but it's also an action-oriented summit. It, it is, what is it that we are going to do differently as a result of what we learn? And, and we're going to be asking participants to make specific commitments if they feel so moved that I volunteer to work on housing for all or improving the housing supply in our region. So happy to answer any questions about those items.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask on a different item? The EDA met yesterday. Did they discuss our joint meeting at all? Or if they were comfortable with the thought, if, if we may have them take the lead on developing the Spotswood and VDOT properties? Do they have any feedback?
They did meet and yes, they did discuss the joint meeting and I think the, the bottom line is they are willing and eager to take council's direction, to accept the challenge, if that's your pleasure, to ask the EDA to take the lead on the redevelopment of the VDOT and Spotswood site. So a lot of details left to be worked out, but, but they, they felt that it was a helpful work session. And, you know, I think what I'll be doing over the next month or so is working on a, a statement to bring before you and to bring before the EDA that will further refine and articulate the policy objectives that council's trying to establish for the VDOT and Spotswood site. Make sure that everybody's comfortable with that, make sure that's measurable. And, and, and then we'll move forward if it's your pleasure with considering terms of a, of a assignable option or a sales agreement with, with the EDA for one or both properties.
In terms of how you would bring that forward, you plan on bringing it forward as, as one legislative action or two legislative actions in terms of the conveyance? If that makes sense for the two property.
Two separate acts.
Separate, yeah. And.
They may have different parameters for nature of the object.
You're right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. City Attorney, oh, excuse me. Recap of fiscal year 26 health insurance strategy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. We, we already kind of covered this information in the joint session with the school board. I, I want to commend Debbie Disjarden, Heidi Reynolds, Jen Bell for the work that they did working with schools on our open enrollment in May. And we are happy to report that the decisions that we made and the, the incentives we created for our employees led to some savings in, in the current fiscal year for health insurance. And so we're moving in the right direction. As we also said in some other communications, the, the health insurance market overall is in great flux and that will be expensive. I think the watchword at the conference was change.
Uncertainty.
Uncertainty. Thank you. When I hear that, I do hear opportunity, but I also hear expensive potentially. And, and we also have some, some difficult information that we're dealing with, with our own claims as a covered group. And so we just wanted to convey this information that the changes that we made, that we briefed you on have, have advanced our health and wellness goals, but we are facing some pretty stiff headwinds in the, in the months ahead.
Oh, boy. Thank you, sir. City Attorney, Mr. Carroll.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Presently, I'm working on some personnel policy revisions with Tom and Kathy Bradley. I've just met Ms. Bradley this evening, also working with her on some other issues. So I think she's doing great and enjoy working with her. I don't know when those will be ready for council consideration, but we are trying to update some of those policies. Nick, I, I have reached out to Brightspeed, not, I mean, recently, so I'm not saying they're not responding. It occurred to me when I did though.
Jeremy, if you could.
Sorry. It occurred to me when I did that the broker is changing there, has changed. So they may not, they may reach out directly to Cheryl or, or to folks at, at the tourism program. So if y'all hear from Brightspeed, let me know.
Okay. And so we're still on month-to-month, right? It's still on the old terms?
Yep. Yeah. Exactly. And, and, you know, there's some components of the new proposed lease. We'd essentially agreed on all the terms and there are some components of that new proposed lease we'd like to get into, into place because it would help with some renovations to the building. So we don't want to do that, obviously, while we're on a month-to-month.
I'll check it to the next tourism meeting to see if there's any.
I would think Cheryl would let us know, but just in case. I, I was contacted by Ro, Rockbridge County Attorney John Dryden recently to take up some discussions regarding some, some property transfers we're going to be working on. A small segment of Courthouse Square is going to be conveyed to the city. And then some property over near the DSS site is going to be conveyed to the city. And so working obviously with the DSS site, Brian Kearney and Buna Vista will be involved there, but we're going to work out a kind of workflow sharing arrangement so that we can all move the documents forward. I think there's been a lot of discussion and agreement about going forward with those plans. But there's, there's some paperwork that needs to be done. There's going to need to be Platts prepared and contracts and deeds prepared. So again, that, I, I understand the county took action on that already. But again, there's, there's more, more to be done before we get across the finish line. When a, when the city receives property, it does have to acknowledge the receipt. That can be handled administratively, but sometimes some localities bring it to city council for that. So you may, you may see it come back to you for that purpose.
Very good.
Other than that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
As with most things, the, the body takes a vote and action and it directs you to start doing the paperwork.
Exactly right.
Very good. Any other questions from council? Hearing none. Thank you all for being with us this evening and thank you for your good work, council. We will stand adjourned unless there's an objection. Have a great night and a better.